You're not using a screen or anything, right?
I wasn't planning on it. Nobody else on yet, huh?
We'll go ahead and keep it on though.
Okay.
To record it.
Okay. Sounds good.
Yep, I should take off that.
Yeah, take off the background, though. There, and I'm gonna move it this way, so I'm a little bit more centered. Um, I don't know, I'm pretty loud. We'll see. If I get quiet, we can.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Cause we're running a little late. You know, when the bishop comes, she gets to preach however long she wants to. And if you have not met her yet, this is Bishop Becca Midaki. I'm very happy to have her here today. She is going to answer all of your deep seated questions about what it means to be an RIC congregation. And part of what this, what I've asked her to do is to address some of the questions that came up during our hundred conversations. So if you remember a while back, we did our hundred conversations, there was an RIC question as a part of those conversations. And we kept track of what you said. And so we went back through and looked at what your questions were then. And those are the things I've asked Bishop Becca to address today. And then anything else you guys wanna ask, all right? That's what we're doing.
All right. Excellent. So yes, Becca Midaki Kaman, I am the new bishop and started July 1st officially in this role. But previously to that was serving in the Senate office as the Director of Evangelical Mission, and it was a really, really long title on top of that. And one of my jobs when I was on that was I was the head, the chair of our Senate's reconciling in Christ team. At our 2021 Senate Assembly, we were asked in one of the referendums that was put forward, resolutions that was put forward, that if we as a Senate should look at becoming a reconciling in Christ Senate. And so we put together a team that I was then tasked with being in charge of. And we did all of these welcome work workshops, including one here in fall of 2022. And then in our last Senate Assembly in May, not only was there a bishop's election, but we also passed a resolution that we are now reconciling in Christ Senate. So I know the process fairly well. I've also helped a few congregations, one of which officially became RIC, a few others started the conversations. And, and one of the other congregations I served was already reconciling in Christ when I came. So, so what does it mean to be reconciling in Christ? One of the things that came up at one of our first meetings at, for the Senate level was that it's reconciling in Christ, not reconciled. That it's a continuous, ongoing process. It's not a once and done. You don't pass this resolution, you have a welcome statement, the end. We've done it all. We have solved the world's problems, or at least the church's problems. Instead, it's a continuous, ongoing process. And one of the great things about being reconciling in Christ is it reminds you constantly that you are, that we are, as the church, meant to be welcoming and inclusive in groups. And so one of the questions that came up in the hundred conversations that Pastor Kara mentioned was that people think it is not necessary because that you already are doing a good job of welcoming. So how many of you would say that fellowship's a welcoming congregation? All right, I would agree with that. How many of you would say that fellowship is an inclusive congregation? Little more hesitancy on this one. So, to me, there's a huge difference. I was recently at an event where I felt very welcomed. People came up and greeted me, said they're glad that they're there. On day one, it was a five day event. Day two, day three, even I felt like the new kid, like the transfer student, the day after spring break. As in, all of these other people were catching up with one another, they were good friends, they were wanted to... And while they greeted me and welcomed me, they didn't include me in the conversation. I had moments in which people would be talking to me, a friend of theirs would come up, then they would turn and start talking and ignore me. I had somebody sit next to me an entire morning and talk to the table, we were sitting at round tables, seated at round tables, talked to the entire table, but didn't talk directly to me, and I was right next to him. So this is what the difference between welcoming and inclusive. And while we talk about welcome work and being, and reconciling in Christ meaning you're welcoming, it also means inclusive. It means bringing people from just, hey, we're glad you're here to worship with us today, to how can you be part of ministry with us? And that does mean that new people are going to change your church. And I know that is scary to hear. Because when new people come in, regardless of who they are, they have ideas from previous congregations that they have attended, they have ideas from, of what they have seen worked in other places, and they might want to institute them and adapt them for fellowship. And that means regardless of who the person is, that you are trying to make them not just feel welcome, but also included. And so a huge part of reconciling works and being reconciling in Christ is this idea of constantly working on your welcoming, or constantly working on how you're inclusive. Most, there are congregations out there who realize we did a really good job of welcoming people to church, and they come back to church, and they stick around for three weeks, and then they disappear because you're not good at including. So some of those things is also name tags, because I'm fairly decent with names. But I'm decent with names and still like I meet someone and a week later, if I'm gonna remember their name or not. You might remember my name, cause you only met one person last week. But they met however many people, multiple. I noticed, nothing I have said thus far is specifically for the LGBTQIA+ community. This is true for all people. That when people come to this congregation to worship, we are called to not just welcome, but also to include and invite them in to be in part of the ministry. Michael, I met him last week, I already remember the name. But that's only because I thought he was coming up to me and saying that I was Bishop Mike for a moment. But, you know, he, this is, I'm gonna put you on the spot, but I think you're okay with this. It's his third week here, but he's already been included by somebody inviting him to this event here. Not just, hey, we're glad you're in worship, hey, you should come up to this forum. And that's what we are called to do as welcome work, as with reconciling in Christ. And yes, you do do a good job of welcoming. How many of you think that your welcoming could be better? Pretty much everyone's hands, you know? That there are people who do not feel welcomed the day of, or there are people who definitely don't feel included. And part of that is just a constant reminder that you can do better, that you can work on things. And when you start to realize, hey, we can do better at welcoming, you start to realize that there's all these different ways that you can welcome people. And sometimes the welcoming is realizing that there are people who are extroverts, who want to meet all hundreds, three hun- how many people are in worship each Sunday? Okay, all 200 people the same day, like that, and they're excited by it. And then you have the introverts who are like, I'm really excited if I just meet one person. I just need to have one person come up and say hello to me. And you need to find that balance of how to not overwhelm, while also making people feel like they were welcomed. You need to find the balance of what is then inclusive of, hey, come to this forum versus, hey, you've been to worship here four times. Do you wanna be on church council? And there are churches that do that. That is, while that is inclusive, that's a little to the extreme. Give them at least four months. Um, but also there are churches that are, that you cannot be on church council unless you're a lifelong member there. You know, unless, or you have to have been a member at least 25 years before they would ever think that you would actually be a leader in this congregation. And so then you start to realize that there's other ways of welcoming. You start to think, well, maybe there's ways in our language that we are exclusive. As I look around this room, it is a predominantly white group. And so is there words that we use that mean something different to people of color? Or that they're used in different ways? Is there a language that we use as a predominantly cisgender, which means not trans, straight group of people, that means something different to the LGBTQIA+ community? I'm on the younger end of the spectrum in this room, is there's a language that we use that means something completely different to a 20-year-old or a 15-year-old because of slang terms? It happens quite frequently. Some great examples, like the song Come Down to the Lakeshore has a great line about just, these my fishnets and my will for working. That song, every time that is sung in a seminary, there is giggles that happen. Because we are not thinking about disciples, but prostitutes. There is the time that I accidentally, in the gospel, instead of saying that Jesus sat, I said that Jesus shat. It was on a baptism Sunday, and I paused. And then there was a ripple of giggles from the teenagers in the back. And I think only the teenagers were laughing at that one. But there's different language, so you can think about how is our language used. I personally get really graded when there's only male language for God. There is a huge expanse of language, just from scripture alone, that we can use for God. That there is not just Father, but there's Creator. There is Sanctifier, there is Mothering Hand. There is all these words, and then when people only use Father, or even more so He, with a capital H in the middle of a sentence, it's a little irking to me. The capital H in the middle of a sentence also irks me because I think it should be a new sentence. And then I always wanna pause at the word beforehand, and it doesn't always flow right. So you can start thinking of different ways. Are your bathrooms welcoming? You just recently switched two of your bathrooms to be, your restrooms to be single-use restrooms. And Pastor Kara and I were talking about them earlier today about what to do with the fact that you go into what used to be the women's room, and there are two toilets in there, and that's a little weird. And so do you put in, do you just cap off the one? Do you put in a urinal? Do you put in a little kid toilet? So it's a family restroom, there's different ways. And that's not just welcoming to people who might not be fear, who might not always be comfortable in a public restroom because their gender identity, how, who they know themselves to be, doesn't always match the label men or women. But also having larger restroom facilities like that is very helpful for people who are, people who are a handicap, people who need assistance when using the restroom, that there is space for their caretaker to move around and actually get them on the toilet, and get them off of the toilet instead of being crammed into a space. There's a lot of reasons, and also for parents, that they can pee while their child is not running amok somewhere, or crawling under the stalls, or whatever happens that little, like, three-year-olds do, that we know happens. I have seen three-year-olds escape from bathrooms and run. And you're like, where's mom? And she comes out of the bathroom with, you know, hands unwashed, pants still buttoning them, trying to track down the young child. So you are being welcoming to young families by having that bathroom space. So there's all sorts of different ways to continue to be welcoming. Another question that came up is the idea of singling out certain groups. And so your RIC, your welcome statement specifically singles out a lot of different groups. It's, I haven't read it in a little bit, so I need to refresh my mind on this. But it does specifically welcome people in the LGBTQIA+ community, lesbian, gay, trans, bisexual, trans, queer, intersex, asexual, or aromantic, or affirming, or allies, plus all, everyone else. The reason why that's important is because there are so many churches that just say, all are welcome, and they are not welcoming. They might even be welcoming in the, oh, UK, you showed up to worship, we greet you, we're so excited that you're here. But they aren't welcoming in the, oh, we see who you are. And now you aren't actually included. Or at least you aren't included if you continue with that lifestyle, whatever that means. And this is a good local example. What used to be called Asbury United Methodist Church, left the United Methodist Church a little over a year ago. And they left the United Methodist Church, because the United Methodist Church right now is in the process of trying to figure out if they, as a total global church body, will be welcoming to the LGBTQIA+ community. And they left because they do not want to be welcoming to the LGBTQIA+ community. They do not think that people who are gay and lesbian, or much less trans, are natural, that you are actually, that you are living a sinful lifestyle. And yet, while they were in the process of leaving, they had billboards up all over Tulsa. You could not drive down a highway in Tulsa without seeing signs that say, no matter who you are, you are welcomed here. But that's not true. Because if you are in a same-sex relationship, well, you could come to church there, but you should actually end your relationship. If you are trans, well, you can come to church there, but you need to actually present as the gender that you were assigned at birth, and not how God created you, and not how you feel most comfortable. If you are aromantic, you can come to church here, but there's something wrong with you if you cannot find romantic relationships in life. We are called, according to their theology, to be romantic relationships. Or if you are asexual, you can come to church here, but don't you think it's weird that you don't like sex? And so we specifically include the LGBTQIA+ community, because they're often people who are not included and not actually welcomed in church, when they hear the phrase, all is welcome. That that means nothing at this point. Because they are might, oh, you present as welcoming, you might even greet me, but as soon as you know who I am, you are not actually going to include. You also, in your welcome statement, include people of color, especially Black, Indigenous, Latinx, yes?
Actually, in the welcome statement, it doesn't have the words LGBTQIA+ or BIPOC. It specifically says people of all sexual orientations, genders, abilities, races, ethnic identities, immigration status, ethnic status and background. So therefore, yes, sexual identities to people who identify as LGBTQ, or people who identify as cisgender. All races, if you are white, or if you are not white.
Yep.
If you are poor, or if you are rich. So I think we were trying to be intentional, and like, every single one of you are using this statement too, as well as somebody on the other end of this spectrum.
Yep. And the other reason why we include things like race in this, that it's not just a welcome statement for the, to include people of all sexual orientations and gender identities, but it's also race, is because historically in the Lutheran Church, especially the ELCA, which is the whitest denomination in the United States, people of color have not been welcomed at the church, at our churches, at our congregations. There are, you know, many of us, especially if you grew up in a smaller town, you know that there is the white church, and there is the black church. And people went to one or the other based on who their family was and what their skin color was. But that's not what God's creation looks like, and that's not what the family of God looks like. And yes, you might be more comfortable here if you grew up with a certain style of worship than if you grew up with Black, historically Black revival preaching. But that doesn't mean that you aren't welcomed here, or included here, if, because of your skin color, it's just a preference of worship style. And so you should not also change who you are, fellowship should not change who you are, in order to be welcoming, because you can include people of all. I mean, well, you should change who you are to be welcoming, but in the individual, should not change your greater sense of what it means to worship. And so there's that, welcome statement includes all those different people, so that people are included, but it specifically targets different groups because they have not historically been welcomed in the church. Have any of you had an experience where you have gone to a predominantly, especially those of you who are white in this room, have gone to a predominantly non-white congregation and felt like the odd one out? That you have stuck out? That is the experience of many of the, of people of color when they come to Lutheran churches that are predominantly white, that they stick out, that they are not included, or everyone knows who they are. And so we have this welcome statement in order to remind us that they shouldn't stick out any more than anyone else, other than Micah, who runs around the altar in the morning. Only as a PK can, so. The third thing that came up in the statement is, is some people who like the idea of becoming RIC, but are very cautious because they feel like it gets really close to politics. First off, faith is political. Scripture is political. Jesus was killed because of politics. Because He said things against not just the institution of the church, but how the institution of the church rubbed up against government. And that's why He was killed. After, shortly after, I think Jan- I think this was the Sunday after January 20th of 2017, which was when Trump was inaugurated as president, our revised Common Lectureary Gospel that day was the Beatitudes. The Beatitudes. Blessed are the poor, blessed are the meek, blessed are the poor in spirit. And bishops across our country got phone calls that their pastors were preaching politics, and they chose that text because they wanted to be anti-Trump. It was part of our reading that comes up, a three-year cycle, every year, we've been doing this Revised Common Lectureary as the official lectureary for over all of our lifetimes, I'm pretty sure, and there's been lectionaries since the 1500s. And yet, people thought that scripture was political. And this has happened over and over again.
The prayers of the people are also an example of that. They are printed and copyrighted a year before they're actually read.
Yep.
But there are a number of times as a pastor that I was accused of being political.
Yep. But really, somebody just had prophecy. They wrote it 18 months beforehand, and they knew that Kevin McCarthy would be like, would lose his speakership. Even though 18 months beforehand, when they, when they wrote the prayers, the Democrats still were in charge of the House, but somehow they prophesized this to be political. Yeah, because faith is political, faith is political, and a lot that we do is political. And if, and it's important for us that our faith should inform our politics, not our politics inform our faith. And so our faith throughout scripture tells us to be welcoming, tells us to be inclusive, tells us to welcome people who are on the margins. There are stories throughout scripture where people who are invited in, who should not be, should not be invited in by what society tells them. Whether that's Abraham greeting three strangers and welcoming them into his homestead, and inviting, and having a massive feast where he easily could have been robbed. Whether that's Jesus having conversations with tax collectors and prostitutes. Whether that's the first non-Jew, non-Jewish person to be baptized in scripture is an Ethiopian eunuch. So a Black man, or at least was recognized as male at birth, whose testicles had been crushed or cut off at a young age, was the first one to be baptized. And should, and by the standards of the day, should not have been welcomed into the faith. And yet, he says, what is to prevent me from being baptized? And Philip jumps out of the chariot and baptizes him. There was a lot to prevent him from being baptized if you wanted to go with politics. And so we are called to be political. Because faith is political, but faith should inform our politics, not our politics inform our faith. So, those were the three questions that came up through the 100 or 99 conversations that happened. Do you all have questions about the RIC process, about what it means to be RIC? Kathy?
Well, I just wanna comment about the eunuch being baptized, that the eunuch could have been cured, you know, and made whole. But, but he was baptized saying, you are accepted as you are. And you don't need to be fixed or cured or made whole, that you are accepted for who you are.
Yep. Thank you.
I came into the booth this conversation, saw the benefit by elaboration, and exactly what reconciling.
Yep. So reconci- so elaboration on the reconciling in Christ process, and I'm, thank you for asking the question, because you, while you're willing to ask it, I'm sure there are other people in the room who are a little... So reconciling in Christ is a designation that is given to congregations from an organization called Reconciling Works. Reconciling Works is not part of the ELCA, but works alongside the ELCA, it's a separate 501(c)(3), separate entity entirely, but it does work with the ELCA and with the Evangelical Lutheran Church in Canada to help congregations on their welcoming, specifically to the LGBTQIA+ community. They started probably 25 or more years ago now, when there was a movement in the ELCA. At the time, if you were a part of the LGBTQIA+ community, you could not be ordained unless you were going to remain celibate and single your entire life. And I, not, and probably not even true if you were trans. And so there was some people in the late 90s who were ordained off of the regular, and then kicked out of the church. One of those who just got, who was ordained, I think in 98, in this process, in this extraordinary process, is Jeff Johnson, who was just elected bishop of the Sierra Pacific Senate three weeks ago now. So our church has changed greatly because of people and organizations like Reconciling Works. So they saw this need of not only were we not allowing gay pastors, but in so many congregations, people in the LGBTQIA+ community were not welcomed. And so they started to work with congregations on identifying which congregations were welcoming, more to identify which congregations were safe for the LGBTQI community. As in, safe emotionally, so that they would come in and not hear a sermon saying that they are sinners, and they are going to go to hell because of their lifestyle, I hate that term, but, you know, for who they are. They also wanted to point out congregations that were places where people could actually participate in the life of the congregation, be included in the life of the congregation, and not just welcomed. And so they started this designation of reconciling in Christ. And at this point, roughly 11% of the ELCA congregations nationwide have been, gone through the process, have created a welcome statement, and are now part of the reconciling in Christ community. So, Cong- if you are looking for a church in Tulsa, you can either go to reconciling in Christ website and find an RIC congregation. Right now, First is the only one in Tulsa that is RIC. Or there is also a website, I love that... Or there is also a website, I love that, gaychurch.org, I think is the website, that you can go to and find congregations of any denomination that has a similar designation. So while we in the Lutheran Church has reconciling in Christ and the, um, I'm going to get denominations wrong, one denomination, it's welcome and affirming, the, which I think is Methodist. Episcopal's have another designation. Presbyterians have another, like, most mainline denominations have something that is the equivalent of RIC. And all, and gaychurch.org takes all of them and puts them so that you can, so at that case, you would come up with not just, uh, First in downtown, but you will also find All Saints, uh, Episcopal Catholic. You will find House Church, both of which First holds. You'll find Fellowship UCC. You'll find, uh, the Methodist Church that is on Cherry Street. So all of these congregations of all these other denominations that have seen these.
After 2009, with a very modest proposal that advanced, this modestly advanced, uh, ordination of gay people. Uh, a lot of focus was put on the 400-some-odd churches that withdrew. But there was very little attention given to the 257 churches that started at the same time. And I think in part because of that policy change. Or it's not exclusively because of that policy change.
Yes. And I think also, when, when we are looking at RIC congregations and when people are looking for RIC congregations, yes, it's often people who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community. But also, what often happens is, uh, especially younger families, uh, who are wanting to raise their con-, their kids in a place that they know that, like, I have a two-year-old. I don't, but you know, if I had a two-year-old, that is, um, and I do not know when this child grows up, what their sexuality or gender identity will be. But I want to make sure that they will be raised in a congregation that will accept this child, regardless of who this child becomes. They want to find an RIC congregation because they know that they will be more likely to be accepted, whether the kid grows up and comes out as gay, or comes out as trans, or gender non-binary, or if the child comes up and is like a huge soccer star, or if they're the, you know, the band geek, or the drama freak, or whatever the things are, that that child will be accepted for who they are. And so we have a lot of younger families that are looking, um, for RIC congregations. But also, if I-